Morning, everyone, and welcome. I've got right at nine o'clock. So at this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And the purpose of the meeting today is a public hearing. And this is the single new business item that we have. So before we move into the, or let's just start with the new business item, which is the proposed tax increase. And before Tabitha, our comptroller, our director of finance comes up, I've coordinated with our county attorney just to give a brief statement about the purpose of this public hearing about the budget. So Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important to note that this is a public hearing required under state law. And I just want to have some introductory statements in regard to what this is and what it's not. A public hearing is an opportunity for the citizens to present their respective opinions on an identified topic, in this case, a proposed tax increase, to the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners will later render a decision regarding the proposed tax increase. The public, a public hearing is not a public question and answer session, but rather, as stated by the Georgia General Assembly, a time at which any person wishing to be heard may appear. The purpose today is for the elected officials to hear the views of the citizenry, to hear their opinions, and to consider those views and opinions in deciding how they will ultimately cast their vote on the proposed tax increase. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Very well said. At this time, I'll call Tabitha to the podium. Tabitha is our comptroller, our director of finances, does an excellent job, and has got many years of sound experience. So she can lead all of us in the room through good explanations of what this time of year brings in the preparing for this five-member Board of Commissioners to vote next month.
Thank you. It's been a minute since we've been here, so it's been a few years. This year, we had some, quite a few challenges. So the purpose of this today in my presentation is to better educate, hopefully, as far as the millage rate process, the process, the work that's gone into setting this millage rate. And then we will have, and it's one of three, one of three public hearings, and we'll have a public hearing at 10 on the budget as well. So with that, we'll get started. The process, the process to establish the tax rate. So early, just after the first of the year, of course, we operate on a July to June fiscal year. So around January, February, we start our budget process. So we, budget planning, that's all of our expenditures, what we expect upcoming, building on what's happened, and dealing with inflation, what's, what our new projects are going to be. And we put that budget into planning mode. Then we forecast all of our revenues. So we forecast, we have other revenues than property taxes. Property tax is about 33% of our budget. We have sales tax, we have title of alarum tax, we have inspection and permit costs, we have fines and forfeitures, we have charges for services. So some of our services are paid for by the charges that are submitted when the service is rendered. So we forecast the revenues, and then the balance is, of course, determined by the millage rate. So we take the property assessments, set the millage rate to generate the money necessary to provide the services that the county offers, public safety, transportation, judicial, to complete that budget, so to get our grand total. So I'm going to go into the property tax calculation. So once our budget's set, we've, we've determined what our budget is, we've determined what money needs to be generated in order to be able to provide the services that we would like to provide at the level that we would like to provide, the property assessments go out to the citizens. Those assessments are a value of what their property, their jurisdictions actually have at that time, minus any exemptions. Then you multiply that by the millage rate, and that, that's what brings us here today to get your total property taxes. Your millage rate is the levy that's established in order to finance the, the operations of the government. Okay, in 2000, the legislature passed what's known as Taxpayer Bill of Rights. So there's a lot of information on here, but basically what that does is protects the taxpayer from indirect tax increases. So it did two things. One, it requires that if the values increase, then the commission is, has to reduce the millage rate in order to offset that value, to avoid any inflationary increases. And it also set the rights for appealing the assessments. We are here today to, to discuss the increase that's in the inflation. So our digest as a whole increased, had an increase of around 19%. That increase was a result of two different components. One's new construction or additional structures that have been added to the digest. The other's the reassessment. So if you take the reassessment piece, the reassessments were about 17%. And you're charged with either rolling that millage rate back or imposing what is defined by the Taxpayer Bill of Rights as an increase. In order to do the increase, we're, we have to have three public hearings. That's why we're here today, is one of those public hearings, first of those three. So here's the ad. Here's the ad that's probably generated most of the, the interest in today's meeting. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to break this ad down just a little bit and then give you additional information to hopefully help you better understand. So the increase is, again, the 17.91%. That is not an increase in addition to what you've already received on your assessment. So your assessments now give an estimated tax bill, so that the assessments that went out June 1st, if they had a tax increase, if they had an increase in value, this is related to that increase in value. So this is not in addition to that increase or that estimate that was on your property tax assessment notice. So according to the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, if you have an increase, or if you, we have a millage rate in the previous year of 4.22, you would be required to roll that millage rate back by .641 mils in order, and to a 3.579 mil for the purposes of generating the revenues through property taxes. Okay, let's go through a little bit of history. We started, this is about 16 years of history, so it's a little more than you would typically look at, but I think it's important to see. In the early 2000s, we operated Paulding County on a 6.5 millage, a millage rate of 6.5. During the recessionary period, those digest values fell, and we increased the millage rate to be able to generate enough revenue to be able to provide the service. At the time, we heard from the citizens that said, you know, if you're going to increase, we understand it's cost money to be able to operate the government, but if you're going to increase it, then promise that you're going to reduce it as it comes, as the values return. And that's exactly what we've done, and you can see that from here. So we had 8.22, and then it's just continued to decline as those assessments have, have increased. And last year, we were at 4.22, and we're proposing to stay at 4.22. You can see, we've rolled the millage rate back for the past several years, and that kind of explains why we haven't gone through this process. Compare Paulding to other counties. So these, these comparisons are from 2022 because everybody's doing this same process. So nobody really wants to commit until they've gone through this exercise in other jurisdictions. So I think it's important to look at Paulding. Paulding was at 6.72 last year in 2022, and we're proposing that Paulding go to 6.52. That is a combination of the milli, of the maintenance and operations as well as the fire tax. So, and the reason that's included is because some of these, if you have a fire service district, then they're separate, but a lot of these counties, I would have to take them out if, because some have a fire service district, some don't. So some it's included in their regular maintenance and operations, and some it's not. So to keep them comparable, I added them in, and that would bring, make Paulding 6.52. But again, that's the 4.22 for the maintenance and operations that we're discussing today. Okay, so where do, how do your property taxes break out? So when you have a property tax bill, your 69% of that property tax bill goes to the school. 17% is maintenance, maintenance and operations, 5% is the county bond or debt, and 9% is the fire tax. The purpose of today's hearing is only that 17%. So the school board held theirs for the 69% of the taxes, and today, the purpose is the 17%, so the maintenance and operations. What's driving any increase? So this increase in millage rate will increase revenues, some, the inflation, we're all feeling that. Everybody, we, we have the same, it costs us more today than it did yesterday for technology, office supplies, fuel, just like everybody else. We're, we're feeling the, the pains of inflation. The labor market, we can't get through one conversation without somebody bringing up the fact that we have, we have vacancies. We have vacancies, we can't fill them, we're not getting attention, we're very competitive, we have, or we're maybe not as competitive, but we're try to be, try to be competitive with other local jurisdictions. It's almost like a, it's very interesting, it's almost like competition to see who can, who, who can attract the, the most wanted employees, I guess. So who can attract, and population. So where are, where do our expenditures go? We're primarily made up of salaries and benefits. 56% of our budget is salaries and benefits, 32% is in operations, and 12% is in our capital expenditures. Over the past few years, we, when we were, when we were dealing with declines, and then we were trying to bring back, bring back services to the county, we held off, we've made use of the capital, made use of the, the equipment that we had to try to make that last as long as we could possibly make that last. Some of our facilities, we've outgrown, we're not able to efficiently operate out of those, and so that's driving up the capital. So how do our, where do we spend our money? We spend our money primarily in public safety and public works. So public works being mostly DOT, stormwater, those are the large ones. General government, that includes everything that's used to service all of these other functions. So general government is the Board of Commissioners, it's finance, it's human resources, it's information technology. So what everybody wants to know is how does this affect me? So I think we can all understand that we're seeing increases, the public's seeing increases, you see them at home, we see them here. How does it affect them personally? So I've got an analysis here that's got 2022, 2023 assessment, and the 2023 actual bill. The reason for putting this here is because the 2022 assessment and the, compared to 2023 is what brings us here. However, I think that the misconception is that they receive their assessment notice, and whether or not that's in addition to, this is not in addition to, this is a result of that assessment notice. So for your maintenance and operations, which is that 17% piece of the pie, last, 2022, the maintenance and operations taxes was $497.96. That was based on a $300,000 home. An average home in Paulding right now is, is about 350. So we're used 300 with a 20% increase to get to the 350. So your taxes would have been 497.96, $497.96 based on that $300,000 home in 2022. Around June 1st, you received your assessment notice, which indicated an increase of 350. And your homestead, if you qualify for a homestead, that was increased by $4,000 this year. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. And so your taxes would go to 565.48, which is a difference of about $70. Okay, your actual tax bill is going to be, is valued at 350, and it is still for the 565.48. So I didn't want anybody to misunderstand that your assessment notice, and then this was on, in addition to, because this is not in addition to, this is a result of that assessment notice. Okay, so what are we doing to increase, I mean, to offset the increase? This wasn't taken, that increase wasn't taken lightly. So we've all had discussions about what we could do to, to offset that. And through debt and fire, we have been able to reduce those. The increase, your, your debt is your debt, and we have a fixed rate debt, and it's the same year to year to year. So what you're required to do is to implement a millage rate that allows us to collect the money to be able to pay the principal and interest on that debt. So when this increase came, we collected it last year, we didn't need the additional funding, so we reduced that so that we're only collecting what we need, what is necessary to pay that debt. Fire's the same. So we had a little bit of growth built into fire, and it allows us to be able to roll back just a little bit, maybe not completely, but to roll back so that we can, what we want to do with fire is keep it consistent. So fire, your fire department's growing, we want to keep them very consistent if we can, we don't want to go through. At tax time, when you have fluctuations between your millage rate and your taxes, it's harder for, for individuals that have escrows, because if you have, if you overestimate what you're going to need, or you underestimate, and then you have big changes, that affects them substantially for the next year. So we're looking for consistency there, but we're, we're reducing that millage rate from 2.5 to 2.3. So you can see for the, from the assessment notice that you received, you're actually receiving a decrease in the debt, down to 168 from 224, so about $60. And the increase for fire is not quite as substantial as the assessment notice estimated. Okay, I mentioned the homestead exemption savings. So important to know, we, this board last year, year before last, took an effort to increase the, the homestead exemption. So this year, it's 6,000, next year it'll be 10,000. That increase, that, based on the M&amp;O millage rate, went from last year, you had 8.44 exemption, this year that exemption's 25.32, and next year that exemption's planned for 42.22. One thing that's occurring this year that's gotten a little public, a little publicity is the tax relief grant that Governor Brian Kemp has put into place, and that is, that allows $18,000 exemption for homestead properties. So it's estimated to run close to $400. I'll show you how it's calculated in just a moment. But that will be used to offset some of this increase. So to do a side-by-side comparison, I did 2022's increment, or property taxes based on a 30, $300,000 home. So that value's 350. Same, same calculation I've done in some of the other slides. So your M&amp;O is a $67 increase, your debt is a $24 decrease, and your fire's a $22 increase. Your school, caveat here, just to note, I'm not certain what the school's going to do. I think they're going to implement a 17.675, but they will be letting us know over the, over the next week for certain of that. If that's the case, it would be 273.95 for a total increase of 339.90, 339.87. The homestead tax credit is $18,000 multiplied by the millage rate of 4.22 and 17.675. So Paulding's homestead will be 394.11. And so that reduced, it will actually reduce your taxes from last year, on average, in this particular scenario, of $54.24. We have some additional resources, and I'll post this so that you can see it, but if you go to the Tax Assessor's site, they have several videos. They have videos that talk about the values of property, they have videos that talk about the exemptions, and they have videos that talk, most recently, about the homestead tax exemption. And there's some frequently asked questions. And one other thing that Paulding County provides to the public is this Qpublic.net. So if you go out to Qpublic.net from the Tax Assessor's site, you can look up your property. It shows where your property taxes go to, and then it shows, basically, according to the budget, how those are spent. And I, that's all I have. So unless you have any questions or comments that maybe can help explain the process.
Before I ask the commissioner to come to the podium and speak, Commissioner Galloway mentioned that she had a question.
Okay.
Well, it's more, I think I know the answer, but I just want everybody to know. So in the paper, a lot of time, or the news, they've talked about, you know, the property tax rollback by the governor, and they've estimated it to be $500. Ours is what, 3 something?
Ours should be 3.94.
3.94, almost $400. But the reason ours is lower is because our tax rate is lower.
That's correct.
Than all, than the average county in Georgia. Is that right?
That is correct. So you take the 18,000 and divide it by 1,000. So it's 18 times the 4.22 plus the 17.675. And that gives you, is, is our millage rate, and yes, because we're lower than, if you take a look here, we're lower than the others, and so...
That's every county around us, isn't it?
That's every county around us.
That touches us, plus some that don't. So, okay, great.
Other questions by the commissioners?
Turn my mic on here. Other questions?
I have a comment. Tabitha, great job. You went through that, it's easy to understand. You did a great job.
Thanks.
So at this time, we'll open it up, I'll open up the public hearing and ask if any of the citizens would like to come forward and sign in. Rebecca, I guess we have a sign-in sheet there. So you sign in, tell us your name, and tell us your concern, that's why we're here today.
Would you sign in?
You sign in at the podium.
All right. There's a pen right there.
I've got it.
I think there's a pen on the side.
She's got it. (laughter) Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Charlie Rollins. I live at 1908 Mountain Olivet Road. I'm a neighbor of Brian Stover in District 4. I've got a total disagreement with this proposal for tax increases. I just turned 70. Luckily, I just realized the tax savings from not having kids pay the school taxes for, for kids, even though I haven't had kids in school for 15 to 17 years, but anyway, that was zeroed out. But then I got my proposed tax bill, and there was 80%, over 80% increase in the taxes for this year. So these numbers up here don't make any sense to me. I'm against any additional taxes. I worked in corporate America for 43 years. I think there's other ways to do this, instead of putting that burden on the taxpayer, or the residential taxpayer, you know, raise your sales tax, outsource things to cut expenses, consolidate departments, or reduce headcount. I dealt with that for 43 years. You tell your department heads, you know, you got to do the same thing you been doing without any degradation of service, go figure it out. It's the same way with commissioners. You guys serve at the public, at the pleasure of the public, and I think we need to look at other alternatives instead of raising taxes on the residential property owner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Cindy Oldham, and I moved to Paulding County next month will be six years ago. I, I've had the pleasure since 1996 of working from home, which meant when I chose to leave Cobb County, I could live pretty much anywhere I wanted to, as long as there was good internet. That was number one criteria with a real estate agent, if there's not a good internet on a property, it doesn't matter, I can't work. So one of the things that attracted me to Paulding, I live out in the Yorkville community, so I left Cobb County, I lived over close to Cobb Hospital, I wanted to get away from all of that growth there, be out in the country, but also be where it was, what I felt was livable. When I moved out here, I'm a single person, I have a lady, I call her my honorary daughter, she's my former foster kid who never left, she's Asperger autism, and she's 33, mentality of 13, but we moved out here, with the dogs to be out in the country. And my first year, when I first moved here, my property taxes, the estimate was $1,082.49. This year, six years later, we're looking at my tax bill, you know, almost had a heart attack when it came in the mail, 27, $2,769.56. So you're looking at a six-year span, a raise of right, right at $1,700. Ouch. I am all for, you know, I totally understand the cost of living, the cost of things have gone up. That's a huge increase, and I think it really needs to be looked at line by line, where the money is going. You've got new growth going on everywhere, that's generating revenue. I totally get the cost of, of... I totally get the cost of, of things have gone up, you know, got to support the fire guys, you know, you need them, they need equipment, you need public service. But I think there's probably some other areas that it could be cut back, or as this gentleman said, you know, look at streamlining, think of where can we really scrutinize those dollars, and think about John Q. Public, the average tax person, you know, living here, who in a six-year span is looking at their taxes more than doubling, and think, do we really, you know, is there something we can do other than increasing that rate? And to make it where it's truly affordable. I chose to live here because it was affordable, out of anywhere I could have been in North Georgia, and I looked at different communities. I chose Paulding, and I, you know, would like for Paulding to continue to choose to keep us as residents. I'm hearing more and more talk through next-door and areas of people saying they're starting to feel like they're being forced out because of the cost, the cost of raising, they can't afford their homes. And that's really sad, especially when you look at older populations that can't afford their homes anymore, being, feel like they're being forced to leave because they can't afford their tax bills. And I think things like that really need to be scrutinized, and really look line by line at that budget, where exactly is the money is going, is there an alternative? So I just encourage you to think about that, and Sandy, I'm in your area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oldham. Did I say your name correctly?
Yes. You spelled it like Oldham, but you're saying Oldham, so. My maiden name was Wellborn, so he asked if I was going to hyphenate, I said, no, it'd be a Wellborn Oldham, nobody would take me serious.
Other citizens wishing to speak?
I'm speaking for my mother. I put her name down here.
You state your name.
My name is Anthony Witt.
And your mom?
My mother's Betty Witt.
Thank you.
We moved out here 10 years ago, we moved from Maryland. The taxes in Maryland were crazy. We were paying three times what we were paying when we moved down here. My father's passed away, my mother is a single, on a single income. She's making it with my help. The taxes go up, she's going to have, start to have to decide between food or medicine. She cannot afford, if not, she's going to have to go and move somewhere else where everything is cheaper. That's why we moved from Maryland, because my father was not in good health. I worked for the, for the school board in Maryland, and I saw a lot of waste. I worked for the maintenance department. I saw a lot of waste in the school board. I had a kind of a inside view, because I worked for delivering furniture, I worked at the main hub for the school board. I saw six people sitting around, one person doing a job. I saw the same thing on the road. You'd have four guys on a crew, two guys laying up against a truck, two guys working. I see it on the road maintenance. I had friends of mine that worked for the state, worked for the county in the road maintenance, same thing, one guy working, four people sitting around. We have to look at the waste that we are having in this government before we start taking the money from our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Anyone else? The podium's yours. Well, that's the conclusion of our regular business, which is our only business today, the budget for the next year. I would like to make you aware that our chief tax assessor is sitting to your, your right, right in front of Angela, and he also has a lot of experience, very well respected on our staff and in the county. And also, other staff that are more than glad to stay, if you would like to ask them a question one-on-one. So any of the commissioners have any other comments before I seek a motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I guess to be official, I ought to close out the public, the public hearing, and appreciate your, all the things that you've said that resonate, you know, we have homes and families and have lived here for a long time, most of us, so we appreciate y'all taking the time to come out and express your concerns. So now, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Galloway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We do stand adjourned.